...of business is city council briefings, of course, and guidance advisory related boards. Andy Friedman is here to give us a presentation on housing and neighborhood preservation.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor. And as Andy gets set to roll here, you all received in your Friday packet a briefing that looked like what he got on the screen. And today at your places, I also provided you some additional information. You will have a memo that I received from Andrew, and I just initialed off on it and put it at your places. It's got a listing of the members by name that's at those boards related to the blue boxes that he'll talk about here. Just dawned on me as I was reading it, reviewing it throughout the weekend, you know, it'd be nice to know who we're talking about here. So Andrew's information is there, and with that, I'll let Andy take over.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. So we have really four boards that we work with, and they're listed up there. One of them you just recently changed over, so just kind of getting the basic facts and orientation out there about them. VB Home Now is an independent 501(c)(3). We're going to talk about them at the end. And VB CDC is also an independent 501(c)(3), but we've talked a lot about them recently. So the origin of each of these. The Beach Governing Board works with homelessness, and it's a board that we're required to have in order to continue receiving federal funds to the community. It's important to know that the continuum of care funds that the Beach Governing Board reviews come directly to the community, not really through the city, although we get a portion of them. They go directly to nonprofit organizations in Virginia Beach that serve the homeless. As you know, the VB CDC Board of Directors you created, this council created it back in 1985, really because we needed an organization that would do housing development and housing ownership, which cities normally don't do. This council also created the Workforce Housing Advisory Board in 2007, which was a required part of the Workforce Housing Program. And just last month, you changed the name of that board to the Housing Advisory Board and gave it some new responsibilities, including to advise on housing and neighborhood strategy. So the Beach Governing Board is the most complicated one because it's comprised of people from around the community, as suggested by HUD. We have both city manager appointees. We have formerly homeless persons. We have representatives of nonprofit organizations and people elected from the Beach Community Partnership, which is our voluntary association of all the agencies working to end homelessness. The VB CDC Board of Directors, you, this council appoints. The Workforce Housing Board, now the Housing Advisory Board, you also appoint. So each one has pretty different roles and responsibilities. The Beach Governing Board has an official role for HUD as far as reviewing and approving submissions for the community for homelessness funding. And now the state has taken up the same approach, and so we also, as a community, apply for state funds for homelessness, and they review those as well. The VB CDC Board of Directors sits the long-term plans and goals of CDC. And the Housing Advisory Board now has both responsibilities for the Workforce Housing Program, as well as advising you and the manager on the proposed, the upcoming housing strategy and revitalizing our neighborhoods. They vary significantly in their budget or funding control. The Beach Governing Board, as I said, reviews grants of about $1.5 million each. They don't receive the grants. They go, as I said, directly to nonprofits. The VB CDC, as we've discussed, has a budget of about $5 million, and the board ultimately is responsible for that. The Workforce Housing Advisory Board and the new Housing Advisory Board have no budgetary. They don't have a budget. They don't control funds. They're basically a policy and program advisory group. As far as staffing, our department and actually Health Department and Human Services work with the Beach Governing Board. Actually, Police and Human Services and Health and us all actually sit on the board as city manager appointees. Our department works with the VB CDC Board, but they employ their own staff through the executive director. And the Workforce Housing Advisory Board, Housing Advisory Board are supported by our department, as well as planning, and of course, the city attorney's office. So one of the things Mr. Moss had asked was, you know, what were the effectiveness of these different boards? So I just briefly wanted to go over each one of them. The Beach Governing Board was created in order to ensure that we'd comply with federal requirements, and we have done so. And so we've never failed to receive the federal funds that are available to our community for homelessness. They really have, and they also have advised this body, the council, on homeless, the strategic plan to end homelessness, and will be doing so again in the upcoming months. The VB CDC Board of Directors, we can credit them or the staff or those together with the 30 years of accomplishments that I presented to you a couple of months ago here in this room. And the Housing Advisory Board, when it was the Workforce Housing Advisory Board, ensured that we complied with all the requirements that the state imposes on us for that program. But it's important to note that the board was, never had project responsibilities. It did not review projects. It did not have any responsibility for creating new housing as assigned by you, this council. So I would have to say that the Workforce Housing Advisory Board fulfilled its role as it was appointed to do. And the program was created. It operated in accordance with the law. We had the one project that was built, and they fulfilled those responsibilities. Now that you've added to that work, which is the housing strategy and neighborhood revitalization, they will be receiving, you know, will it be working with the staff and bringing to you recommendations about those issues? That's all in the future for that board, though. Oops, go back one. And in the future, you know, we still need to have the Beach Governing Board. It's going to continue to exercise the required roles that the federal government has assigned to it, and that you have actually accepted their recommendations regarding homelessness strategy. The VB CDC Board of Directors relationship that we have, as you know, is under discussion right now, and we'll be working with the manager on that. And the Housing Advisory Board, you just recently gave it its new set of responsibilities, and we'll be back with you over this summer and fall on a proposal for a housing strategy. So that board also has upcoming responsibilities. VB Home Now Incorporated, you may not know much about this board. This is really not a council board. It is an independent 501(c)(3) that is really self-created, but the mayor was the instigator of this organization. And he said that he thought the community could demonstrate support for the work that the council was doing to end homelessness, especially by the building of the Housing Resource Center. So it now exists as an independent organization, but we have at least one member who is also on the Beach Governing Board. And the idea is that the Beach Governing Board is the organization that knows the community goals for homelessness, and they transmit that, those goals to the VB Home Now, which can then choose to use its funding to address some of those needs. It's still an independent organization. And they also did brief this council about two years ago about naming rights for the Housing Resource Center. If they were to receive a large gift, you agreed that they would be able to grant naming rights for that building. So we, our department and the communications office, work with VB Home Now to help them in their fundraising efforts. Just recently, they successfully solicited Steel Incorporated with the help of the mayor, and we have a commitment to that, from them, for funds for use to support the Housing Resource Center, as well as they're going to work with us in the possibility of employment opportunities for people who are ready to leave the Housing Resource Center. They are holding a fundraiser on July 31, and they have donations in the bank of over $266,000 at this time. So that's a real quick summary of the boards that we work with, and I'm happy to answer your questions, hear your comments.
Questions for Andy? Have you got any, let me ask you, have you got any prospects for that naming?
We don't at this point, Mr. Vice Mayor. They're out there working on it, though.
Yeah.
The Louis Jones.
Right. We're open right here in this room. We are open.
Bayside East.
I would, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would mention that we continue to try to schedule a meeting. We were actually planning to have a meeting this evening after this workshop with the CDC and the Second Act Leadership and their executive director, with our liaisons, Ms. Kane and Mr. Moss. But John, as you all know, he's been called away on Navy business, so we're going to end up pushing that out probably two more weeks to the workshop environment. The conversation that, if you'll recall, is really centered on, you know, what is the emerging mission of the CDC? How does it interact with its second organization, Second Act? How are they responding to the original mission that we, the city, gave them in the formation of that? And the liaisons are aware of the council's concerns, and so we're trying to set this up with their chairman and their seconds so that we can have a frank discussion. And ultimately, we'll probably be back to the council to further discuss that relationship and maybe how the future evolves. I would also say that in this, as I try to get my arms around it, and following up on the Virginia Tech study, that we all had a couple of briefings, and more recently, the kind of a roll-up. And as we transition from the assessment phase and the consultant's valuation phase into a strategy formulation phase, this Housing Advisory Board that is the new name of what was formerly our workshop, our Workforce Housing Advisory Board, I believe that's a huge mission that we have in really getting our arms around our housing stock, our housing inventory, our neighborhoods, and how are we going to create incentive programs, if you will. I know some people react to the word incentive in a different fashion, but I believe that somewhere in the discussion, we need to put some energy forward as we take on the housing stock. As I look at Mr. Earn, and I know all the great things that are going on with both South and North Lake Holly and all the, it's an amazing transformation that's going on in that older neighborhood of Shadow Lawn. And so investments in infrastructure, as well as trying to incentivize homeowners into investing in their properties going forward, will be critically important for our city to maintain that really high quality of living that we have in our neighborhoods. It's one of your major goals, the revitalization of our neighborhoods, and so this is the real heavy lift that we got going forward, and we'll enlist all the ideas that we can from the council to be a part of that. It'll be a tough lift.
Anybody else have any questions for Andy? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Andy. I appreciate it.
Next item is the Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act of 2002. Our esteemed city attorney, Mark Stiles.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. It's good to see you today. Back in 2013, we did a briefing on the PPEA. So if you were sitting around this table in 2013, a lot of what you hear now will be a repeat, but I thought since the PPEA gets brought up from time to time, and the manager had asked that we go back through and talk about what the PPEA is, how it works, and what the General Assembly hoped it would accomplish. I put a lot of words on this slide. I know that you got the slides this weekend, and so hopefully you've read the words. But when the General Assembly enacted the PPA in 2002, it set forth, as it often does, what it hoped to accomplish with this legislation. And it said in the act that there was a public need for the timely acquisition or construction of public facilities and infrastructure, and that that need wasn't being wholly met by existing procurement strategies. And therefore, recognizing that there were then existing federal and state incentives for promoting public-private partnerships, they hoped that by employing these partnerships, the public could receive benefits, including more timely project delivery and lower costs. So what the PPE is, as the General Assembly suggested, is nothing more than an alternative procurement process for qualifying projects. The act defines a qualifying project as any building or facility that meets a public purpose and is developed or operated by or for any public entity. The general concept of the PPA is to facilitate the opportunity for private sector involvement to collaborate and form partnerships with governmental entities with the goal of spurring innovation. That innovation could be in the form of shortened project delivery times. It could be in the form of creative financing. It can be in the form of lower operational cost factors. And often, it's in the allocation of risks, for example, operational risk, to the extent a private entity is willing to come in and take over operation and assume the financial risk associated with generate, with revenues generated. By sharing that risk, the public may have a better project at the end. The PPA, and I want to emphasize this, the PPA is just one tool in the procurement toolbox. And it's a tool that the locality always controls the use of. There always has to be an affirmative governmental act before a project moves forward through a PPA process. That's even true where there is an unsolicited proposal. In that case, as we'll discuss, the first step is a determination about whether or not to accept that proposal. Before a PPA proposal can be accepted, there has to be, the local governing body has to adopt formal policies and procedures. This body adopted procedures originally in 2003 and last revised those provisions or those procedures in 2009. I provided a copy of the procedures along with this presentation in your package, and that procedure is also posted on the city's website on the procurement page. Now, we talked about the multiple ways, or the two major ways in which a PPA process may be initiated. One is either through the intentional solicitation of projects by the city. The city may determine that it wants to solicit PPA proposals from private entities. If so, we generally create a webpage that describes the type of project we're looking for. We usually put, we usually leave that procurement notice or advertisement somewhat general so as to allow the maximum amount of creativity and innovation to be issued by the offerer. But we usually also give at least enough detail that the offerer knows what it is we're trying to achieve. Are we trying to achieve advantages in financing? Are we trying to achieve a reallocation of project risk? Are we trying to achieve improved timelines? Are we trying to achieve cost savings through a design-build process, et cetera? If we initiate a request for proposals, we would leave that request open for at least 60 days. And likewise, if we receive an unsolicited proposal, the first decision for the city government is whether or not to accept that proposal. If the proposal is not accepted, and this is an activity for the manager, but as we've discussed previously, the manager would generally speak with this body before making a decision on whether or not to accept an unsolicited proposal or to solicit proposals. If the proposal is not accepted, it's simply returned, and the process is concluded before it begins. If the city determines to accept the proposal, then the proposal must be posted. Again, it's usually posted on the city website. It may also, a notice of posting may also be published in the newspaper. And then you have to solicit competing proposals. Even though this is a different procurement process, the concepts of competition and the concept of public notice and involvement are still prevalent and are still very much a part of the process. And I further want to make clear that the decision to accept a proposal for consideration doesn't mean that you will ultimately do the project or enter into an agreement with a private party. The city has the opportunity to conclude the process at any time up until the actual execution of a binding contract.
Do you have to acknowledge it, Mark? Do you have to accept or not accept? Can we just ignore it for a while, or is there a time limit there?
The code doesn't provide a time limit. I think good business practice mandates that you give a yes or a no as soon as reasonably practicable. And one of the things about, one reason why you give, the state law says you give the proposal back. There is some, often some proprietary information contained in that proposal. If you don't accept the proposal, that proprietary information might become disclosable, so you hand it back so that there's not a record to be disclosed in FOIA. So no deadline, but you try to do it within a reasonable period of time.
So if you accept it, if you don't accept it, you just hand it back to them, and it's over?
Correct.
If you do accept it, then you've got to go through the process.
Well, you have to begin the process. You have to post it within 10 days after you accept it. And then you have to solicit competing proposals.
Right.
You have to give at least 60 days for those competing proposals to come in. And as we'll talk about, often this body instructs staff to give more because usually you're talking about larger, more complex projects. And then you do an evaluation of the conceptual proposal. But at any time in this process, if the city determines, you know what, we don't want to proceed to the next step, you can terminate the process. Now, you know, sometimes, and this has happened in the past, where we've received an unsolicited proposal, Light Rail is an example, where we received an unsolicited proposal, we decided that the concept proposed in the proposal wasn't exactly what we were looking for, so we turned around and created our own solicitation and returned the original proposal and said, you can feel free to submit in accordance with the new proposal. So you're not confined in any way by an unsolicited proposal. You can always modify what you're looking for in that solicitation that goes out. As I said, whenever you solicit proposals, either after accepting an unsolicited one or doing an affirmative solicitation, you have to allow 60 days under your policy. You frequently allow longer. And at the conclusion, after the submission of those proposals, city staff would evaluate those proposals, and they may do several things. They can say, well, we need more information. They can always go back and ask for more information, even at the conceptual stage. They can determine to proceed to the next step with one or more of the proposers. Or, as I said, the city can determine to end the process at that point. The very first phase is a very broad conceptual phase. At that point, you are essentially evaluating the qualifications of the people who are making proposals. You're evaluating whether or not the project is one that has, that solves public needs, that has benefit to the city. When you get on to the detailed phase, at this point, you're getting a much greater level of detail. You're looking at lifecycle costs. You're looking at proposed financing. You're looking at other factors at a more detailed level to evaluate, to determine whether or not you want to proceed to a contractual phase. You can proceed in this evaluation process along a couple of different ways there that are similar to traditional procurement practices. You can go with a competitive sealed bid, which is basically price-driven. You can say, we're going to evaluate based, at this point, because we've already narrowed it down to this number of people that we want to go forward with, we're going to do a competitive sealed bid-type low-cost analysis. But what we typically do is the competitive negotiation process, which is the best value proposition. And there, when we're going to do that, we tell the proposers, here's what we're going to evaluate you in the detailed stage on. So when you're crafting your submissions to us, gear it towards showing us information relative to these factors so that we can do a detailed scoring. If you move on, again, you can always end the process. You can always request additional information. Or you can begin negotiation, and if you do that under the best value, you start with the highest-ranked proposer, and you try to negotiate a contract. You always have the right, if that doesn't work out, to go to the next proposal on the list, or again, to end the process. But again, it is a competitive process. Coming out of that detailed phase and into the negotiation agreement, you can have two different types of agreements. You can have an interim agreement, and an interim agreement is generally used, again, in more complex projects where it's unreasonable to expect the proposer to do all the design and environmental analysis and surveying and project planning and development on their own dime initially. I mean, there's a lot of cost on the private side potentially to put together a project through this process. And so sometimes, rather than going straight to a comprehensive agreement, you'll take an interim step and say, okay, here, we're going to do a contract that says you will get us this far down the path towards the project for this consideration, and then we'll evaluate at the end of the interim to move on to a comprehensive agreement. Generally, the Animal Control, Animal Care Center, I believe, is one where we went straight to a comprehensive agreement for the construction of our animal care facility.
Under an interim agreement, would the proposer of the project pay for all the design work and everything?
That's negotiated.
Negotiated, okay.
Now, your policy provides certain minimum requirements for public input. In any project I can think of, you have exceeded what was the minimum requirements were. The state law requires a public hearing prior to the execution of any interim or comprehensive agreement, and it requires that the agreement be posted. We require, or we have historically posted the agreement more than 30 days prior to the public hearing, I believe. But that's not required, but that makes good common sense, and I think that's what we try to do. So there has to be at least one public hearing. The agreement has to be posted. In many cases, though, we do additional public outreach, and we do additional public briefings in this room, often out in the community. And in any case, where there is to be an agreement coming out of the PPA process, that agreement has to be approved by this body in an open session vote. And of course, you always have the opportunity for public comment at that time as well. FOIA applies to this process. There are certain portions of the process that can take place in a closed session, specifically where discussion of the proposed contract or the proposed terms in an open session where that would interfere with our ability to bargain or negotiate, we are allowed to do that in a closed session. But there always must be an open session briefing before any approval. There are specific terms in the PPA and in the Freedom of Information Act that authorizes the city to protect confidential and proprietary information of the private proposer. There are essentially two types of information that can be protected. One is negotiating terms. That is, if the public disclosure of those negotiating terms while you're negotiating would negatively impact one of the parties to the negotiation, then those can be withheld while the negotiation is ongoing, but at such time as the negotiations are concluded, either because one side has walked away from the deal or because the parties have signed an agreement. At that point, that type of information becomes public. The other kind of confidential information is true proprietary information. Often, it's financial information, it's secret work processes, it's things that if they became public would harm, in an ongoing way, the operations of the private became public would harm, in an ongoing way, the operations of the private party. Those types of information are, are provided, subject to a promise of confidentiality, and that confidentiality remains forever. So that truly proprietary type of information is, is, is not disclosable at any point in time by the locality. As I, as I said, the city's PPA procedures were last model, updated about eight years ago. There hasn't been any, any major change in the state law which would spur us to update those, but over time, we've, we've come across issues that the council may at least want to consider making updates to, to take into account. For example, as I said, although we typically have much more public involvement than the proceed, the current procedures require, there's nothing that, that would stop us from putting greater public engagement and public input procedures in there so that we could ensure that anytime we're proceeding under the PPA path, that there's an adequate opportunity for the public to be aware and engaged in the process. One specific example of that is, as we've said, it's the manager's ultimate decision whether or not to accept on behalf of the city an unsolicited PPA, and we set, or to solicit PPA proposals. We've, we've noted that the manager would always bring that to you as a matter of, of good judgment, but you could make that plain in your procedures should you choose. Frankly, lawyers wrote the procedures. We, we, our initial procedures were drafted at a state level. There was a form that was put out at the state level, which we adopted with minor changes. And it's not the most readable document in the world. We could certainly, we could certainly make some improvements as to its readability. And in fact, we've been working with the school board on updating their procedures, and, and we're doing exactly that. So that is something we could look at doing. And on large projects, in order to promote offer or interest, there's often a, a question by the proposers, you know, hey, before we do all this advanced engineering or this design work, you know, that, that, that costs real money. Is the city going to offer a stipend to cover, to cover that cost? Your, your procedures don't make any reference to that right now. In many, in many cases, it might not be necessary or appropriate. But if that's something that, that the city wants to be able to consider doing in the future, it's probably appropriate to set forth a standard for the consideration of stipends in the policy document. So, those are some things you might consider in terms of possible updates to the procedures. So, I went really fast. I've done, as I said, we've done this once before. I'm happy to respond to questions. I'm more likely to refer those questions to Dana. But, uh, that's, that's what I have for you.
Jim Wood.
Yeah, Mark, the animal control building and Sandler, are those the only two that we've done?
Twenty-Fifth Street. Twenty-Fifth Street, I think, was the most recent one, yeah.
So we've done three PPA's since 2003?
My understanding.
Okay.
Bob Dyer.
Yeah, I guess a lot of this conversation is germane to our current situation when we're evaluating, you know, what to do with Building One, you know, in terms of a plan and the direction and what we should do going forward. And I, I, I think, you know, we have to talk about, you know, expanding the pool a bit in terms of fairness and equity and, you know, with dealing with level in the playing field and, you know, just giving that perception out there. And the other thing, I think the critical part is going to be the civic engagement part of this in terms of bringing it forward. And I really think that, you know, going forward, if we were able to have a, you know, a more widened process, I, I, hopefully the process itself would maybe bring a lot of solutions to the table that maybe are not apparent right now in terms of, you know, what to do, why location would be preferable over another, you know, the type of building construction or anything. I just, I just think by bringing in a few more people. But I, I really don't think we can, you know, underplay the necessity for the public engagement on this. And, you know, saying that, and, you know, one of the things I briefly discussed with the manager prior to, the first meeting we should have with the public is maybe just an exclusive meeting, explaining what's going on with Building One, what necessitates us moving forward, why we're examining the different scenarios that we're doing right now. But also, and I think important, I touched on this last week, to touch on how this plays into the context with the other priorities that we have going on in the city, whether it be with stormwater, infrastructure, roads, and, you know, things of that nature. So the first meeting, and I think we need that meeting sooner rather than later, in terms of explaining to the public why we're doing what we're doing, and get the buy-in right there in terms of what we're doing. And the other thing is, maybe a suggestion, and Mr. Moss brought up, you know, the wisdom of having a lot of town hall meetings over the summer. But the other thing is too, if we're going to explore the PPA process and solicit other options, it could be a totally different location. We don't know, because we, you know, we don't know what's out there. And, you know, is there wisdom in delaying the two other, the July and August planned sessions till after Labor Day, when people are not only more engaged, but when we'll also have a lot more information that we can bring to the public in terms of options? So, you know, but, but once again, you know, those are my initial thoughts on it, but, you know, I think what impresses me about this presentation was the emphasis on the civic engagement part, and, but also the necess, the necessity of this council to be transparent, you know, throughout the whole process, I think, would do a lot to serve the public's needs.
Thank you. Ms. Hanley?
Well, I would have some comments on that, but I wanted to stick to the PPA. It says, all right, so, so we're, this is mainly the public need for public infrastructure and facilities. And, all right, the animal control fit that, but with the 25th Street facility, as I remember that, it just sort of came out of the blue. We hadn't discussed doing anything with that parking lot, and it just kind of plopped. And, and I'm not really sure what the public infrastructure, of course, I guess we made it become some parking lot, but that's mainly a residential community and an entertainment facility. So, that one just seemed to me to be somebody looking at some city property that maybe they had an idea for. That one just really seemed different from PPA. But the only one that I can remember that we just gave back and said, we're, we just don't want to do this now, was the Rudy inlet proposal that came for us. That came as a PPA, but I, I remember we had just had a retreat and it said, because we had bought the Rudy property, we said, well, we're buying it because it's for sale now, and we have to do it if we're going to do it, but we're not interested in doing anything with this property for a good while, until something really spectacular comes forward. And so, we got a PPA on that, and we just said, we're not interested. And I remember the PPA's that came for us. I guess we had, I guess the arena came as a PPA.
The arena started as a PPA.
Yeah, as a PPA. And the first go-round. And then, then Light Rail. But they, but I can see those as being maybe infrastructure city. So, so it really is very broad. It's mainly somebody seeing some city property that they've got a use for.
Well, it, it is, it is very broad. The, the, the hook, if you will, for the 25th Street project was turning a surface city lot into structured parking that increased the availability of public parking while additionally providing a new amenity to drive tourism at the beach. So, there were definitely, I mean, it definitely was a qualifying facility within the act, but it is not, I, I will agree with you, of the same character as the animal control and care facility. I mean, there are, there is a lot of, of flexibility here to define what kind of project it is, and the whole purpose is to spur innovation, to allow the, the private side to say, hey, if you'll let me do this, this is what I can deliver to you that benefits the public in return. That's really what the PPA is designed to do, to provide flexibility to allow exactly that kind of creativity.
It, it, it is so broad, and I guess what's bothered me about the PPA process is, you know, in thinking back over these that we've had, some of them, you know, have been for infrastructure, particular projects that we had talked about, we wanted to do, is if somebody comes up and says, okay, well, I'll submit a PPA. But then we've also got these examples of things that we had not even talked about that suddenly land before us. And that's, that's, I guess, kind of a bit of a problem. I, I, but it's so broad. I guess if somebody submits a PPA, we either say, yeah, we, we want to pursue this, or no, we don't want to have it, like we did with the Rudy thing, or no, we don't want to deal with this now, so we just give it back.
Well, and, and the other thing that I will say that, that sort of ties onto the end of that is, not every public-private partnership is necessarily a PPA.
Right.
You have to use the PPA when you are acquiring or procuring a, a, a city facility, or you have to use some form of public procurement, and the PPA is one tool for that procurement. But there are transactions out there, like, I mean, the arena is a public-private partnership in every real sense of the word, but it did not end up being a PPA because the arena is going to be publicly owned or privately owned and operated. And, and again, that's an example of transferring risk. The financial risk of operating that facility has been borne now under the terms of the agreement by the private party, and, and that type of risk sharing is something that the PPA is designed to facilitate, but it, it's not the only way in some projects to get there.
You finished, Barbara?
I think so. It was just complicated.
Hannah?
I don't like them.
I was wondering, I guess it's more for Dave, Mark, than you, can we get a synopsis or a report of all of our PPEAs and our PPAs and, and what the public's gotten from it, and how much it's cost us, and what the benefits are, with kind of what that snapshot looks like? I don't know, five years, 10 years? I don't know what.
There are very few. I, I mean, you just, you just heard, we, the, the Biggie Burger that we did, that we all wrestled with, was the new animal shelter at the time. And, and we know what that has brought us. I'm happy to give you the, a summary of how that transpired, who, who submitted proposals, the elongated process that we went, the number of public engagements, the consultants we had to bring in to actually do. This was a level of, of design that we, we were dealing with a Parvo outbreak, if you remember the multiple Parvo outbreaks that we had in the old animal shelter at Leroy Drive. And it was, it became a, a real social issue for the city council to, to wrestle through this. I'm happy to share with that. The, the...
We've got PPAs that aren't PPEAs that we, that are more...
You're talking about P3s, public-private partnerships. We're working on that to do that. The mayor's mentioned it to several of you all, that he's got us doing that. We're trying to get apples to apples and do that. So, during the course of the conversation that we'll have over the next 90, 100 days, 120 days, whatever the council's will is, to go about deciding what you want to do with Building One, we'll get that, that'll be part of the information that we want to share with everybody going forward. So, yes, ma'am, we'll do that for you.
Barbara has another couple.
I just want to comment. One of the things that's, I guess the problem, as far as I'm concerned with PPA, is, you know, when we are considering something that we really aren't real serious about, kind of hate to go forward with it and have people out there spending the money putting together a proposal if we really aren't serious about wanting to do something, because that gets to be expensive. I mean, the first person who starts it, okay, that's, that's on them, but if we kind of accept it and say, well, we would like to have some other proposals, we're encouraging people to do it. And this is what would bother me about, I mean, I, I think we've got a, a basic question on, if you, if you want to confine it to the next one that we're going to be looking at, I guess, which is, you know, this facility. The basic question of, do we want it someplace other than at this location? And if we don't want it at someplace other than this location, that ought to be it, and then we just zero in on things at this location. But if we, if we really saying, okay, we want to look at this PPA offer that we've got, and encourage other people to do some others, we ought to be, you know, serious about wanting it in other places, or you send people off on a wild goose chase, spending money developing a proposal that we, you know. I, I think that's a basic question for this one, with Bob's comments.
All right, you want to respond?
Yeah, I, I'd like to assist in this. The, the city attorney opened up that the real purpose of the PPA was to facilitate private sector participation. And, and that is in concert with what Mr. Dyer mentioned, and that is creating a, a vehicle that will create the level playing field so that everybody gets an opportunity to make a suggestion, let's say, off-campus. The reason why I'm saying off-campus is because you own the property here, this would be an RFP decision if, at the end of this public review and assessment and information garnering period, that we, the, the body makes a decision that they, they want to keep it here at the center, then that's, that's an RFP, and that's a design build, and Mosley set those conditions pretty well. And that's why we invested quite a bit of money to get that whole assessment in place. What, what I think, Mr. Dyer, you were alluding to is, I think it's important that I gave a public meeting in our last, uh, public presentation so that everybody understood what the Armona Hoffler proposal was. I think that we have done a lot of looking at across the city, but no one says that my staff and I have all the crystal ball to tell you that that's the only other place that you could put it, because there are some other places that they, some folks out there might be able to promote. If you go to chart number six, and if I could have Dana hit six and, or it would pop up real quick, and, and above me, you would see that the, the conceptual phase, it's, when you talk about putting together a concept, it's not, it's not the heavy-duty pre-engineering level of work. It's not a 5% or even a 15% design. It's, it's a basic concept that has these entities that, that the city attorney has listed on here with his staff. And quite frankly, those folks that are in the business of building $55 million facilities, they have the where-for-all to, to pull this off the shelf. They know who their CEOs are. They have a chronological listing of all their successes and buildings that they've done. They, they have their financing strategies in place. They have the ability to borrow and, and to present financial strategy. So, the ability to go out and ask for the public to say, are there, are there people interested? Do they have ideas that maybe we haven't considered? And you, as a council, would like to have an opportunity to understand all the possible courses of action that might be out there so that there is a level playing field, so that folks could actually make those submissions. And then what happens is, now, the off-campus level playing field gets established, and you get an opportunity to look at what comes across the deck. Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days? Is it 120 days? That's for you to decide. I don't think a concept should take more than 90 days. You should be able to get it by the end of the summer, and then you would be able to see all the courses of action as you roll out of the summer months, and be able to put those, you know, on the table for you all to decide what you want to do with your city hall for the next 50 years. So, I think that if you, if you move forward, those, those companies, those, those consortia will, will work to, to put those together, and by the time we roll into the end of the summer, those things will be on the table, and you will have, you will have opened the door in a proper fashion for others to, to have input. I think, I think one more thing, sir, if, if you go to six sta, correction, five, Dana, that's probably the most important chart that, that was briefed to you today by the city attorney. What, what that chart is really telling you is, this process of moving the commencement process, you really have three choices at this point. And, and these all assist me in trying to, trying to fall, to initiate a commencement or to, to cancel the process. Number one, you reject the Armona Hoffler proposal. Number two, you can accept the Armona Hoffler proposal, and it goes, it's posted, and, and we then submit in, in the period to follow, a request for solicitations from other companies, which opens the playing field. Or, item number three, you can, you can, uh, put, you can tell Armona Hoffler, we're going to give you... Or item number three, you can, you can, uh, put, you can tell Armona Hoffler, we're going to give you, we're going to reject your proposal and we're going to go out for a solicitation for everybody to come out and to submit theirs. In which case, you've done about the same thing that you've done on option number two, that is to accept and then open it up for others to compete. You just reject that and you go out cleanly with a solicited proposal to the street and you maybe define it to say, we would like, and I would make the recommendation today, not that we're voting today, but I would, what I, what I'm actually asking you to do is to think about this so that we can actually have that discussion and recommendation from the, from the body at our next formal meeting. Not that, not that a vote needs to happen, I'm not sure that has to happen with regards to that. But I, as the manager, who has to make this decision according to the general assembly's rules, I need your input. You, y'all need to figure out what you really want to do here on these three options. And I think moving forward and allowing those competitors, those private companies, to formulate their ideas and come across the deck to you all and, and share with you their ideas. You're not accepting it, you're, you're just asking for other concepts to come through, onto the deck, and that you get an opportunity to evaluate those down the road when decision time is finally decided.
All right, Jessica, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I had a question, since the, the Armona Hoffler proposal that we received so far, would it meet the criteria to be a PPEA now, or would they have to resubmit additional documentation?
They would have to, Dana's done a cursory run-through, they're, they've got some additional work that they would have to put in to make it a, a PPA informal. And, and I would have 10 days, I would probably tell them they need to clean it up. If you're asking me for what I would recommend you do, it would be simply to reject that and have them resubmit a thorough package like everyone else that would submit a thorough package, and then we open up that window for everybody. I think that meets a level playing field, Mr. Dyer, and I think that would be very helpful to everybody. This is a learning process. No one has all the facts associated with this. We are going to actually commence a video on Monday in the building with our facility engineer, Tom Nicholas, so that we have the facts regarding why we have to do this in the building. We are going to also provide in that video the additional 70,000 square feet of office space that we have to do. And so when we get down to the real decision, it is if all things being equal, y'all have to make a decision where you want it to go.
I, I'm sorry.
Shannon, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, I was, I think I, I mean, I, it's already been said a couple of times, but I think, I think probably the first decision should be made if we want to look at somewhere outside of the municipal campus before we go soliciting any, any other ideas, be it accepting or rejecting the Armona Hoffler proposal, or, I, I just think we should probably decide if we're open to that or not as a body.
Shannon?
And that's what I was gonna say, and I think that's what Dave was saying. I, in my simple mind, it's we either want it here or we want it there, and as a body, we need to decide where we want it to be, because if you're putting something out to bid, you can't put something out that says, hey, it could be at six different places, you decide and you give us what you think the best, that doesn't work. It's a hard, hard RFP to write. It's a very difficult one to respond to as a developer, because you don't know what you're dealing with. It's very different equation. So I think our first step is what Jessica just said, we, we decide if we want it here or there, and then we put the RFP out, because it makes it much cleaner. And, I mean, I don't know how long that's going to take. Do we have public input on that aspect of things? Do we, as a body, decide if we want it at A and B and then get the public input on what they want in the buildings? I don't know what the correct route is, but I think we're making a huge mistake if we put something out there just saying, here, build us a building, and we just can't do that.
All right, Bob?
Yeah, and that, that was a point I was going to make too, and I, I kind of alluded to it last week, that I think it's essential at this point, sooner rather than later, the council give a direction in terms of which way we want to go. You know, based on my, you know, some of the conversations I had, I think we're pretty split on it right now, you know, in terms of, you know, should we move forward or not? And I think, you know, in fairness to Armona Hoffler and anybody else who may be contemplating moving forward, you know, now, I don't want to make a rushed decision, but I also want to make a decision that's fair to them, you know, in terms of dragging this out of, you know, if the body itself is not really going to be, you know, in favor of moving forward. But I think that we have to have a decision, a discussion at this table about which direction we want to go. And if, in fact, we do decide, you know, there is an openness to, you know, off-campus stuff, then, you know, we can proceed one way. But, but I think, I agree, I agree with Shannon and Jessica, and, you know, something I alluded to last week, this body has to set the direction in terms of what the criteria are, what we're trying to do. And, you know, then based on that, you know, then we can shape the public engagement, you know, based on the direction that we set, you know, in terms of what's going on, and I think it would clear or define to the people that may be putting in. And in terms of even with the PPA, you know, this has the potential, you know, to be a tool for the future, for any other future projects that we may have. For instance, if we put out for a fieldhouse, maybe a PPA comes in, you know, that the city doesn't have to build it and operate it, somebody else may. Or a theater that they're talking about building down at the old dome site, maybe somebody will be willing to come in and build it and operate it and things. So, but the point is though, you know, this has the potential to be a tool, but by the same token, I think, you know, that, you know, replacing building, building one is going to be right up there with Lake Gassen and a few other ones in terms of decisions, what we're going, this body's going to be doing. And we have to make sure that, you know, I think the public knows that, you know, you know, this body is going to be setting the direction in which way we want to go. But, you know, yeah, this is not an easy one.
All right, well, the purpose of this presentation was to make sure everybody understood the PPEA, and I think we've kind of gotten off on to some, a little bit off of that discussion, but nonetheless, it was good discussion. I think we need to move on, though, we've got a couple, two or three other items. So, thank you all. The next item, I believe we have, Mr. Hanson, is the Lesnar Bridge.
Yes, sir. Your single largest public construction project in the city as we sit here today is the replacement of the Lesnar Bridge. And we have not really been back here in a long, long time to talk about it. So I asked Chris Wito, it's, you actually put on a tie today. Yeah. We've got our project engineer, project manager here, and his director of public works to present you an update on what's going to happen, and a, and a very large phase of it is about to take place. So Philip?
So I'm just going to give you a very quick introduction, and it's really going to be an introduction of Chris. Chris is our project manager. He's been with this project, living it for the last three-plus years, you know, even before we got started. So, you know, he's, he's the expert. He has done more interviews, more presentations about this project than any project in the history of the city. So he's going to give us one more. We're about to engage on a, a pretty exciting piece of, of work where we, we moved the crane, that overhead crane, the gantry, that you see on the left side of the bridge there, over top of the bridge to the other side, and we'll begin putting up the new segments for the second bridge. So Chris is going to talk about that, but we're also going to use this opportunity to give you just a very short summary of where we've been and where we have to go and what the schedule is. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chris and you got it.
Thank you, Phil.
Welcome, Chris.
All right, thank you all. We are about to enter a very exciting phase of this project. It's a fantastic project for the city of Virginia Beach. The, the locals out there, they, they love to look at this bridge, they like the progress of the bridge. And we're about ready, like Phil said, to move this gantry from the north side to the south side, which of course is going to involve three short-term closures of Shore Drive. So that's a major milestone for this project, because we can't start the construction of the eastbound bridge until we get that thing moved. All right, first of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about the budget, so we all know how much this thing is costing us. In engineering, it was just over $11 million. Property acquisition utilities, all told, was roughly $7 million. Construction is $94 million. We have some contingency money there, but the total project cost is about $116 million. A little bit about schedule, the construction schedule. We awarded this, this project in April of 2014. We've issued our notice to proceed June 2 of 2014. The project is roughly 70% complete. Now, if you look out there, it doesn't look like it's 70% complete, but we have most of that superstructure sitting in the yard at Atlantic Metro Cast in, in Portsmouth. And right now, we're roughly halfway through the substructure of this bridge. Demolition of existing bridges is expected to be complete by this July. We're about 80% complete on the demolition of the two old bridges. All pre-casting of segments were anticipated to be complete by this August. And we do expect to complete the eastbound bridge in March of 2018 and a total project completion in May of 2018. So that's a little bit about project scope and budget. We finished the first three phases of this project. It's a five-phase project. We are currently in phase four. We've moved the eastbound traffic to the bridge. Now it's with the eastbound and westbound traffic on the, on the new westbound bridge. And we're continuing, continuing to build the eastbound bridge. The last phase of this project is to build the 10-foot-wide multi-use path on the westbound bridge. Now, there's a lot of folks, believe it or not, who actually think that that chain-link fence and that barrier service that we have out there right now on the westbound bridge is the permanent sidewalk. So I just wanted you all to know that that's only temporary. The last phase of this project is to go back and build that 10-foot-wide path. We just needed all the room for the four lanes of traffic. A little bit, just the stage four, this is where we are right now in the construction. Okay, upcoming short-term closures of Shore Drive are going to be required for the gantry move. This is going to be happening Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday next week. So what's going to happen on Monday, Monday evening, we're going to start off with a single-lane closure, about 9:00 at night, but then we're going to close down Shore Drive, beginning, beginning at 12:00 midnight, and lasting to 4:00 Tuesday morning. And what we're going to do is we're going to get, set two girders across Shore Drive. So we have to have that road closure to connect the, the, the false work on the north side of the bridge to the false work that we built on the south side. So we're finally connecting those two pieces of false work with these girders. Tuesday, we're going to close the bridge again between the hours of 12:00 AM and 4:00 AM, and we're going to run cable, prep for the gantry move. Wednesday, we're going to close the bridge again, and we're going to winch the, the, the gantry across Shore Drive. So we're actually going to pull this whole gantry across Shore Drive using a winch and cable system. And so when you go, when people get up to go to work on Monday morning, it looks like nothing's going to change. When they get up to go to work on Tuesday morning, they're going to see two girders across the bridge. The girders are going to be high enough that we're going to allow cars and trucks to go underneath those girders. When they wake up Wednesday morning for their morning commute, they're going to see that the gantry has somehow made it from the north side of the bridge to the south side of the bridge. And when they wake up Thursday morning, they're going to see that now those two girders that were across Shore Drive are now gone. Now, that's the plan, of course, weather permitting, things may change, but that's the plan right now. I could assure you, the project team has vetted this thing over and over again. Contingency plans, we won't get into them now, but we have, we made sure that everything is going to be in place and ready for all kinds of things that may pop up. I put here Thursday, nothing's happening Thursday other than from 12:00 AM to 4:00 AM, but the workday Thursday is nothing going to be impeding traffic or Thursday evening. I wanted to show you right now, this is our current setup. You see the gantry stored on the north side of the bridge. We got traffic on the new westbound bridge, and we're demoing the two, the two, the two old bridges. This is the situation that we're going to have come Tuesday. We're going to have the false work on the north, or Wednesday. We have the false work on the north side, we have the false work on the south side, we have the girders across Shore Drive, and we have the gantry moved to the south side of the bridge. Another, another view of this, showing an aerial shot, we're simply going to take that gantry, move it from that north side right across Shore Drive, and put it in position to build the eastbound, eastbound bridge. This is a video. Now, this move does not happen very fast, so I wanted to show you what about 20 feet per hour looks like. So you have to find a point somewhere on 3556 on the Bay condominiums and look at that to see how fast this gantry is being moved. This is a video right now, and it is playing, right, Dave? So it looks like it's not moving, and this is why we need a four-hour closure of Shore Drive. We're going to have to traverse roughly, now, of course, when they did this move, they're being extra careful, because the first time they're moving this gantry, when you move it to the south, they'll probably move it a little bit faster. But we're going to have to traverse 50, 60, about 80 feet to get in position.
Chris, are these your winches over here?
Yes.
Pulling it, okay.
There's actually going to be, there's actually two of them. You can't see the other one, because it's hidden behind this one pole here. One winch actually pulls it, the other winch is actually a brake. So if for some reason we winch it and it gets hung up, we use the other winch to pull it back, to straighten it back out. So it's not just, it, we have two ways of moving this, this gantry. And that's where the gantry sits today. Now, what you could see in this, in this photo are the girders across Shore Drive. This is before we open it up to traffic. So this is the, with the condition you're going to see on Tuesday, when we put those two girders across Shore Drive. I did want to mention, right now, we have that sidewalk. It's a four-foot sidewalk on the north side of the westbound bridge. We're coming back in the last phase of this project to make that a 10-foot sidewalk. I showed, I want to show some demolition pictures. We're removing the superstructure of this bridge and the piles. We're actually pulling out all the piles that we can, all the water, all the piles that are in the water are actually pulling out. And that picture right down there, you can see how they're pulling out a 90-foot pile. The superstructure and those piles is all being loaded onto barges, as you can see here. And those barges travel about four hours north to Cabbage Pete, Cabbage Patch Reef, which is located just off of Kip to Peak State Park. That's where all this bridge demolition material is going. And the Virginia Marine Resources is helping us place that material to enlarge this reef.
Chris, is it going with the concrete ships there?
It's close to there, but not exactly right there. In fact, if you go, if you go on the Virginia Marine Resources website, I mean, they're all excited about this, because it's like tripling the size of their reef. They actually have a guy out there when replacing this, we just don't dump the stuff off the barge. We actually have to pick it off the barge and place it nice and neat, stacking it up like Lincoln Logs. Yeah, I don't think it's by the concrete ship. I think it's 30 feet of water out there, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, fisherman's paradise in a couple of years.
Oh, yeah. I'm sure that with all the notifications that we made and all the presentations that we've given about Cabbage Patch Reef, it's going to be a very popular place for fishing. Upcoming major milestones, of course, the gantry move, that's going to happen next week. Demolition's going to be complete next month of the existing bridges. We are going to begin segment installation of the eastbound bridge in July. In fact, we have the first full span of the eastbound bridge actually on-site. If you look on-site on our false work with it, right by the Lynn Haven Dredge Material Storage Site, the whole first, first span is over there. We're going to complete segment pre-casting in August of 2017, and we should be complete with the eastbound bridge in February of 2018. Some photos of the recently constructed pier columns of the eastbound bridge. This is Pier Column 2, and there you can see the rebar cage of Pier Column 3. And we're about ready to finish the foundation and footing for Pier Column 4. There's only nine pier columns of this bridge, so we're approaching halfway on the substructure of this new eastbound bridge. That's why I'm saying, even though we're saying it's 70% complete, it may not look like it's 70% complete. But once we start erecting the superstructure with the pre-cast segments, we could do a span every two weeks, at least that's what they're saying in the schedule, and we saw them do that in the last three spans of the westbound bridge. A little bit about the aesthetic features of the bridge, I wasn't sure if you all knew, but this bridge is going to have a coating on it. It's a palamino beige coating. It's, the color was picked to match the local sand, and there you can see our retaining wall, which is a customized wall, has a pattern in it, took like wavy sand. And you can see our customized railing up on top of the bridge. We also have a, a lot of lighting on this bridge. We have lighting on all those pier columns. In the reveal of that pier column, there's going to be lighting that's just shining up from the bridge. Along the edge of the bridge, you can see what we're calling necklace lighting. So if you look out across the bay, do you see the Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel on the horizon, it looks like dots of light? We're kind of mimicking that with this Lesnar Bridge here with that necklace lighting. Then we've got street lighting. Then we've got street lighting. What you can't see here is we also have pedestrian path lighting, and that's actually cast into the low parapet wall and shines down upon the path when the folks are walking or riding their bikes. And here you can see one of scenic overlooks. We also have a public art feature, which we're coordinating with the Public Art Virginia Beach Foundation. They've hired an artist, Donal Lipsky, and they've been coordinating with us to make sure that we get the foundations in the right place with this bridge. And we kidded around, say we want to make sure the art doesn't hurt our bridge. So we, we got that all settled and planning hopefully to get this artwork installed prior to us opening up this bridge. And I'd like to finish with showing a little video, or not video, a little overlay. This is the, what the bridges looked like before we started construction, and this is what it's going to look like when we're finished. So here you'll see the, the nice wide lanes. We have 10-foot-wide multi-use paths on each side of the bridge. We have an eight-foot shoulder, an outside, an outside shoulder, a 14-foot-wide outside lane, a 12-foot-wide inside lane, and a six-foot-wide shoulder on each of these bridges. So there's plenty of room on these bridges for anybody who wants to run, bike, whatever. There's plenty of room on these bridges, and there's the scenic overlook, which is going to have our art feature. And again, we're anticipating the total project completion by May of 2018. Any questions?
Any questions for Chris? John?
What was the original completion date?
The original completion date was June of this year, so...
Is that, is this contractor behind, or was it changes on our part, or what?
There's only about 30 days' worth of weather delays on this project right now. So he's roughly 240 days behind schedule, contract schedule, which there are liquidated damages. Yes, at the rate of about $3,100 a day. In fact, he's, the contractor's on notice beginning in July, because his official contract date is July 2nd, end date is July 2nd right now, unless any change orders come up that's going to extend that date. But right now, he's behind the contract schedule.
John? But, you know, we, we talk about, you know, looking forward and those types of things a lot, and I know that's a lot of times a real painful process to, to go through. It obviously, when we have those discussions, it, it obviously sometimes creates an awful lot of controversy. But, you know, I, I can remember back, you know, when we were talking about this project many years ago, many of you all remember, you know, we had obviously identified that this was a need and something that needed to be done. And our city manager at the time came and suggested that we put significant money, millions of dollars, into designing this project. And my recollection is, at the time, we had no way to figure out how we were going to fund it. And we were also recognizing that those engineering studies that we were spending millions of taxpayer dollars on had a limited shelf life. We couldn't just sit there and wait for 20 years to find the funding, that, you know, it was going to expire, and I don't remember, it wasn't real long, like six years or something. So we had six years to be able to figure out where we were going to be able to find the money for it. But if we had not taken those steps and had the political courage to do that, when the funding became available, it would not have been a shovel-ready project. And there's, we, we would still be talking about how we were going to figure this project after, after it had crumbled, and, you know, we were looking at closures and all sorts of things. And so, I mean, this was, I, I remember this would take it, for me personally, a lot of political courage to go ahead and do it. But boy, and Chris, thanks to you, I mean, I'm, I'm so...
I'm only building it. John and Dave, they were involved in all of that at the time, and it was basically an $11 million city investment to get 85 million dollars worth of state investment and another $11 million in federal investment.
Remind me, how much were we on the hook for with engineering stuff that we had paid for out of the gate that was going to expire?
About 11 million.
I remember being a big number.
Yeah.
You're right, John. If we hadn't spent that money, this bridge wouldn't be built right now.
We'd have been done.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, one, thanks, Tom. When we closed this bridge, we did put it out there to notice, we're not prohibiting public safety emergency vehicles from crossing this bridge. One lane of that bridge is going to be kept clear of all construction equipment and kept open as an emergency lane. So if there's an emergency of EMS, fire, police, they should know that that lane is being kept clear. When the emergency vehicles pull up to the intersections on each side of the bridge, they will be let through that clear lane. They'll, they'll stop all work what they're doing to let those emergency vehicles cross that bridge. That, yeah, that's an important point to make there.
Yes, Barbara.
My comments, a lot were answered with John's comments as far as what did we wind up with city, what state, what federal, because this was, this was sort of a miracle project, if there ever was one. With, with all that being so much of a state money, was this a VDOT project, or has it been a city project?
Even though we have VDOT funding, we're also UCI-certified, VDOT's allowing us to manage our own project.
That's why it's gone so well.
And, and, thank you.
Better than Pollard Road.
Well, we have an accountable, that's the thing, as, when the city manages those VDOT and those federal dollars, we are accountable to our citizenry. So we have to go, we go the extra mile to make sure that we're trying to accommodate as many people as we can, and we pay attention to how it impacts businesses, how it backs the commuters out there. We do follow a lot of VDOT guidelines, honestly. Because we're UCI-certified, we still have to follow a lot of the procedures, but we have a team in place. We hired a, what we call a CEI firm, Construction Engineering Inspection Firm, to help us do the, a lot of the paperwork, the civil rights paperwork, the materials paperwork, just tons of paperwork on, on this particular project. And just going back real quick about the, about the funding and about coming in the nick of time, not only did it come in the nick of time of funding, it came in the nick of time of actually having to post this bridge, you know? Even though we're under construction, we had to still do bridge inspections on the old bridges every year that they were still in service. So we started seeing these bridge inspections come back, and they're getting worse, and they're getting worse, to the point where operations is like, hey, Chris, well, what are you guys planning on opening up that, that westbound bridge? So, you know, we opened up just in the nick of time, because they're real close to saying, okay, we've got to post a weight restriction on, on this bridge, on the old, on the old westbound bridge.
I would just say you all have done, just because, you know, from my distance, which is pretty good distance away from this, it, it looks like it's gone very well, and your updates were extremely good.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Yes, anybody else? Thank you very much. Great job.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. The next item, Mr. City Manager, is the monthly billing.
Yes, Mr. Bob Montague, our Director of Public Utilities, is here today to give you an update on two very important initiatives, monthly billing and then mobile dispatch. Bob, thanks for being here.
Well, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here. Before getting started, I wanted to introduce a couple of members from my staff. Marilyn Crane, my assistant, who's helping me out today. And I wanted to introduce Lavinia Daniel as well. Lavinia is our Customer Information Systems Manager. She is also the project manager for both of these important initiatives, and she's done a great job of leading a relatively small project team that's been responsible for bringing both of these projects to fruition. So we're, we're glad to be here today. We wanted to first talk with you about mobile dispatching, and that's a recently implemented technology project. We're trying to get our presentation up now, I see. While Marilyn is working on that, I'll just mention that Public Utilities, we certainly envision ourselves as the regional leader in the provision of water and sanitary sewer collection services. And in trying to ensure that we remain a leader, we are always looking for new and innovative ways to improve our service delivery. And sometimes emergence, emerging technologies present themselves that enable us to look to change some of our business practices or operational practices, and mobile dispatch is, is really a case in point in that regard.
Not on there, Marilyn?
Right where the thumb drive is sitting.
Hold the thumb drive.
Well, there's two of them up there. You tried E, did you try F, or did you try F and not try E? Did you try about this?
Very tough.
Why I like flip charts.
I think if you just reinsert your thumb drive, you'll get it, you'll get a, should get a screenshot in the last, should pop up on you. What kind of thumb drive did you bring? There you go. There you go. Open that folder.
There we go.
Drag it up. All right, you're good.
All right. Thank you for bearing with us as we got that up on the screen. So next one, Marilyn, one more. So what is, is mobile dispatching? It's basically the use of a web-based application that, that interfaces with smart devices such as an iPhone or a web-enabled tablet device such as iPad. That's what you see there in one of our service inspectors truck, that's a large iPad device. And what does it do for us? Well, it greatly enhances our ability to be efficient in how we process service orders and how we deliver services to our customers. And to explain this a little bit further, I think it's instructive to understand what our paper service order process looked like, and this is one that we used essentially for 40 years with very little change. As you see, there are seven different touch points there. It starts with customers interacting with our customer service reps. That's depicted in, in number one there. The customer service reps works with the customer, determine what work is needed and schedules that work. All of that work ultimately gets printed, item number three, and item number four that represents a dispatcher who takes that paper service order, calls it out to our field technicians, which are represented by touch point number five there. Our field technicians then go to the property, do the work, they document their, their work and what they did manually on a paper service order, and then at the end of the day, they take that paper service order along with all of their other work throughout the day, along with all the other work from all of their colleagues, and all of this paper ends up in our update section where it was manually keyed in and orders closed by our updates group. So that was the old process, and then contrast that with the new process under mobile dispatching. So you see, we've been able to remove more than half of those touch points. So we still have customers calling in and interacting with our customer service reps, and they continue to schedule the work. But the big difference is there's no more paper, so there's no more printing, there's no more manual dispatching. Once that order is, is created, it is automatically dispatched at the right time to our field technicians out in the field, and they do their work and their documentation on their iPad device, and then all of this information is ported automatically into our backend customer information systems without any exchange for paper. So it's a huge efficiency gain in terms of, with mobile dispatching, we basically freed up portions of five positions, which is really critical for us for the second initiative that we're getting ready to talk about, which is moving to a monthly billing schedule. But to, to just emphasize some of the disadvantages of that old paper process, as you saw, too many points of contact, there was double entry of the same information, both in the field, and then once that information got back to the office, where's the service location? It seems pretty simple, but that's one of the struggles that our water service inspectors have when they get out in the field sometimes is just finding meters. If you think about sand bridge and how often the sand shifts, just finding the meter can be a very, quite a challenge for them. So now they have all sorts of information at their disposal on their iPad device. It helps us to respond faster. One of the things that we deal with from time to time is emergency response. I think when we have cold weather snaps and we'll have multiple customers experiencing pipe bursts all at once, and right now, it really requires a very, very experienced dispatcher to know service addresses and where our service inspectors are. Now, the system does it for us. It knows the location of where the work is. It also knows who's closest and that, that dispatch happens automatically so that we're able to respond quickly. It used to be that account, account information was not readily available to our field technicians. Now, with mobile dispatch, they have much, much more information at their disposal, and they're truly becoming extensions of our office where they're able to assist customers with their questions when they're working with customers out in the field, really, really improving our ability to deliver quality customer service. Some of the back office inefficient processes, just dealing with paper. I want to give you a sense, this phase one of, of mobile dispatching involved two work groups, our water service inspectors and our meter mechanics, and those are just under 30 employees. Those two work groups, every week, work a volume of service orders equivalent to, to between two and four reams of paper. So all that paper is now gone, and, and I just, I call it the gift that keeps on giving because every week, all that paper is, is, is gone, and that whole back office process about tracking paper, filing orders, retention of those orders, it's, it's no longer an issue for us. Something as simple as handwriting. Take a look at that third picture and that, that four-digit handwritten number, that last digit, I don't know what it is. Is it a zero or a nine, or we were debating, maybe it's a Q, we're not sure. But even simple things like that are no longer an issue because all of this information is exchanged digitally. So again, the, the highlights of mobile dispatching, it helps us to better manage our, our service costs. It's obviously that we're improving our service delivery to our customers, and that's the most important thing. We're finding that we're making better use of our existing resources. I previously mentioned that we've freed up parts of five positions, which is huge for us, and then improved visibility and control of our resources in the field. Also gives our resources in the field the, the ability to better document unusual situations that they encounter, where they're now able to take pictures of, of those situations, and those pictures are now associated to those service orders, and we no longer have to track Polaroids in the office. So that's, that's also a big improvement for us. This next slide just gives you a sense of, of, again, that volume of work that, that these just two work groups handle. You'll see that we've actually had a decline, which is a good thing, in, in the number of service orders that we've been working. You may recall the General Assembly made some changes to the state code last year that requires a longer period of time before we terminate service for non-payment. It's been a good thing in that we're seeing some customers are actually paying. They now have 90 days before they're subject to service termination. So that's the positive. The, the negative here is that the customers who are getting cut off are having larger balances. So that's been a bit of a trade-off. But nonetheless, you see a peak there in 2013 of just over 150,000 orders that were worked. We're still working 116,000 service orders, so mobile dispatching and the efficiencies that it provides us is really a big deal. Next, I just wanted to give you an idea of what this, this looks like. This is the dispatcher view, and what's ironic here is we really don't have a dispatcher anymore. We have someone who sits in dispatch, but it's really for safety reasons of our employees. We've got 30 folks who are out there, so our dispatcher now is concentrating to ensure that our, our folks are safe in the field and to answer the occasional radio call that's coming in now. But, and, and the dispatcher is one of those five positions that's being used now, and now they're becoming experts in handling web-based customer service requests for us while they're sitting in the dispatch area. But this gives you a view of what they see. Those green icons that look like houses represent the service orders that are out there at this given point in time, and you'll see other little icons. Those are actually little field technicians wearing hard hats. That depicts where our water service inspectors are out in the field. So you have all that information that's available to you at a glance. The pane on the left, each one of those lines represents a, a service order, and those colors mean something. Everything that you see in green is a dispatched order. The ones that are up above that in that pinkish color are actually priority orders. And the one that you see in tan is actually an order that was currently being worked at that moment by one of our technicians. So the next slide shows you what a field service representative is seeing on their iPad device, and, and one of the options they have is they can look at aerial photography instead of the digital map if, if they so choose to. Again, you see the green houses... Again, you see the green houses that show where the location of their work is. And again, that left-hand pane is just all the orders that this particular field service rep has to work. Again, those colors mean something. The pink ones are all priority orders. In this case, these are service reconnect orders, which we consider to be a priority, and it's helping us to get to them more quickly. The one you see in yellow is the water service inspector is actually en route to that property. Next steps, what I was talking about was phase one. It's been a huge success for us, and we're preparing to move to phase two late this summer, early fall. Phase two, we're going to have a focus on our, on the bureaus and our operations division. So, that includes our sewer collection folks, our sewer pump station personnel, water distribution, and our electrical support bureau. We're seeing a lot of energy with this, with the superintendents of those bureaus are now talking to us about volunteering to be next and seeing some of the benefits from phase one. So, again, highlights, mobile dispatching, faster, more efficient response to service requests, improved customer service for sure. We're making better use of our existing resources. And again, most importantly, we're really improving and adding to our capacity to handle additional work with our existing resources, which is a great segue to our, to our next topic, which is moving to a monthly billing schedule. So, as you all know, our city services bill is currently billed on a bimonthly schedule. And the city services bill includes four separate charges, water, wastewater collection, stormwater management, and solid waste collection. And what's making it challenging for our customers is, on this bimonthly schedule, is that with all these different services, and one can certainly argue that each one of these services is an excellent value, but when you combine all of them, the bill becomes pretty formidable with the average residential bill now at about $200 on that bimonthly schedule. This next chart shows you over the last six, seven years, starting back in 2011, that average bimonthly bill was just over $120. That was back before we had a separate solid waste collection fee. As you can see, that was added. It first appeared in 2012. And then, with rate increases for these various services in the succeeding years, that average bill, again, now, fast forward to 2017, is just over $200 on that bimonthly schedule. So, you may recall, last year, Councilmember Kane put together an ad hoc committee that was tasked with looking at ways to try to make this bill more manageable for our citizens. They worked diligently throughout much of 2016 and culminated their work in a presentation to council this past December. And their primary recommendation was that we look at transitioning from that bimonthly schedule to a monthly billing cycle. So, we're preparing to do just that. In fact, on July 1st, that transition is slated to begin. And the anticipated customer benefits, we're hoping that those smaller, more manageable balances on the more frequent monthly bill will be a benefit to our customers to help them to better budget for and plan for that monthly expense. It puts us on the same cycle as all the other utilities that customers are used to receiving and paying for on a monthly basis. It provides customers with more timely information about their water usage, which is important because they, they'll learn about potential leaks in their house more quickly. They can make more timely plumbing repairs and hopefully avoid those larger bills related to leaks. So, the transition to monthly billing, there's some good news in that the incremental costs associated with moving to a monthly schedule have been accounted for in existing rates and revenues. So, there are no associated water or sewer rate increases for fiscal year 18. In preparation for this transition, we've recently put a contract out for a private meter reading service. Alexander's Contract Services started reading meters in the middle of May for us. It's kind of like if you're, if you have a paper route as a kid, and you may have 75 or 100 customers, this is kind of like a huge paper route. Alexander's is becoming familiar with 133,000 accounts. So, they're hard at work and doing a great job for us right now. And again, they're preparing for this transition to doing essentially double readings beginning July 1st. So, I wanted to give you some information about what this transition is going to look like. As I mentioned, it does start up in July. And July is really going to be a transition month. With those first bills that are billed in July aren't going to look much different to those customers that are receiving them because those ones that we're billing in early July were last read in early May. So, they're going to have 60, 61-day billing periods, which is what customers are accustomed to now. But because we're doing double reads and double billings every day during the month of July, by the time we get to the middle of July, those bills will have 45-day billing periods. And then, when we get to the end, then we'll truly be at that monthly schedule for all bills moving forward. So, we're trying to get the word out to our customers on this, and we certainly want you to have an understanding of what this transition month is going to look like in the event that you're getting questions. Overall, the bill format is going to look the same. Obviously, the, we do have consumption chart information that's on the bill, and that will be changing to reflect the monthly timeframe. We've been trying to get the word out to our customers with a pretty robust communication plan. We've been putting information out in our bill stuffers, printing up specialized envelopes for our customers who are still getting the paper bills. And then, we're doing marketing for our e-bill customers as well, trying to make them aware that this transition is getting ready to happen. We've also been doing indirect customer outreach through the media, through social media, and through planned beacon advertisements. And then, we've also been coordinating with some partner organizations. HSD is going to be transitioning to a monthly schedule along with us in July. And then, we've been working with the treasurer's office because they're about to get twice as many bill payments as they're accustomed to getting for us. And then, of course, we're also talking with 311 so that they can respond to citizen inquiries. So, again, just to recap this change, it's starting July 1st. And again, July, the month of July is a transition period. When we get to the end, we'll truly be at that, at that monthly billing schedule. No impact to water or sewer rates, which is good news for our customers. We envision this as a significant improvement to customer service and through more manageable balances. So, with that said, take any questions.
Any questions for Bob?
I want to say thank you to you bothering Tom. Worked really hard with the group and the committee, setting through those meetings and then going line by line by line. And what if with this work or that rabbit hole or this rabbit hole, trying to figure out what will or will not work. And it was laborious, and I thank you for doing that.
Well, it was a great experience, and I think we're going to have a good outcome for our customers. So, we appreciate your work on it as well.
I'd like to add, you know, Bob pointed out that we're contracting out the additional meter reads to private contractors. We're also moving the entire operation to private meter reading, and that's represented a massive savings. That has had a lot to do with the not, no need to raise the water rates to pay for it along with the efficiencies he got with the mobile dispatching.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Vinnie, thank you. I know you worked hard on it. Bob thanks for the presentation. Thank you.
Next item is the emergency medical services.
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor. We are on time and on schedule. And with us today is Chief Ed Brazel. I thought it was time to come back before you and give you an update on some of the good work that's going on with our emergency medical services. And today, Chief, it's all yours. Thanks for being here.
Hi, sir. Thank you, Vice Mayor, and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. We'll start out by, you can, you can let go of your wallets. I'm not here to ask for any money today. I'm not here to drop any big news on you. It's essentially, coming up here next week is the first year of my official appointment as your EMS chief, and thought this is a great time to come and talk about what's going on in your EMS department. So, I've got a clicker here. We'll just give you a quick update on what's going on in EMS. I want to talk about some of the good stuff we're doing and also the new building that's underway and what's next for EMS. This past year, of course, been a year of transition, changed out some senior staff, looked at our organization from top to bottom, looked under every rock for things we could change in terms of policies and procedures. And I've got all that in place. So, we've got great support from the hospital community, from the rescue squads, from the community. And so, I think this will be the last time I say from here that, talk about transition. Transition's done. We're not looking back, we're looking forward. So, everybody who always wants to know about are numbers. So, let's start with that. Right now, we have qualified in staffing the ambulances, 451 volunteers. These are trained, two people, to get the truck on the road. But we've got many other volunteers on top of that. We've got 258 folks in the training pipeline. I'm going to talk more about that in a minute. We have 73 folks that are either on our water rescue team, tactical medics, search and rescue team, doing specialty activities. We have some volunteers who do the behind-the-scenes business work for the squads, helping with fundraising, recruiting, logistical activities. And then, we've got another group of qualified folks, 71 folks that are qualified beyond the ambulance, but are on some type of leave, whether it's an injury leave, maternity leave, vacation, what have you. So, what's not shown there is they're backed up by 36 of our city career medics and another 36 of administrators, instructors, clerical support staff, what have you, that work behind the scenes to help those ambulances on the street. What that 451 folks gets you is 12 ambulances on average, which 94% of that crew is made up of volunteers. We're very proud of the care we're providing. Our patients, 99% of the time, report the condition is the same or has improved. Our cardiac arrest survival rate, which is sort of the national benchmark that they evaluate EMS agencies, we're 31%, which is above the national average. And we see some room for improvement, and we're hoping to get some even bigger numbers coming out. And of course, from an economic standpoint, with our volunteer workforce, our cost per call is just a little over $200 per call, and nobody, nobody can touch that savings. Our trends in terms of membership, the top number is that higher number of everybody that's qualified, and then below that is those that are actually running. So, it's about 20% at any given time are on leave, and that's comparable to what you see in a career service. We came to you in 2015 with some concerns about a little bit of a decline and that we were going to need to change, change some courses. And so, you can see, it looks like we've stabilized that and got an upward trend. The bottom number is the exciting number. That's the folks that are in training, whether in our EMT class or whether they're running as that third person in training on the ambulance. We've seen a dramatic increase in that pipeline due to extra classes and changes we've done in the intake process. Going back a couple of years ago, you had about 24% of the time, you'd have a third person on the ambulance. This month, it's 42% of the time, there's a third person in training on the ambulance. So, that's indicative of the health of the organization and potential for where we're going to go as these people get qualified. Some things going on, just outside, just the personnel side. We've got some great stuff. We recently received an award from the American Heart Association called the Mission Lifeline Award. We always talk about that sudden cardiac arrest survival, but now, we're looking more at preventing the heart attack from happening. What this recognizes is if someone gets a blockage that we can get in, assess them, get them to the hospital, the right hospital, faster so that they don't have the damage. And this award, this is more than just to our volunteers. This is to our firefighters, our career medics, and our hospitals, and the investment we've had in our equipment. Because now, we can go and within minutes, get to a person before they're ever on the stretcher. We've got an assessment of them on its way to the hospital, so they're getting ready. So, this is, this is big news in terms of patient care. We're out there on the beach. Summer's here, in case you didn't know it. We've got 70 lifeguards working down in Sandbridge at the market, Little Island Park, and patrolling in the area in between. That's under the EMS department. Virginia Life Saving Service, our city contractors work in the resort, Croatan, 57th Street, and patrol in the north end area. So, they're going strong. We've got this season and another season left on that contract. And we saw a very strong marine rescue team, our volunteers with boats and divers, helping out on all the waterways and working with police and fire and lifeguards. Special events. We do special events all year. Summer's, of course, our busiest time, and I know the event management people, the police department, everybody's been up here to talk about events, and whether it's a 5K run or Patriotic Fest or Rock and Roll Marathon, it's a big deal. We do mass gatherings, and we have a lot of folks out there, and we put a lot of equipment. And we are pretty proud of the service we're delivering. It is a burden. What's unique with us is that all the volunteers that are out there, they have that 5K run, they are already doing their three and four duties a month on the ambulance, answering the 44,000 911 calls. So, we're coming to them saying, would you come out Saturday morning one more time extra? They do it, they do it with a smile, and, but it's a lot of effort. Brigade Chief Tyler Kerr here is, he spends most of his week planning and coordinating special events. It's gotten to be that big. We also, of course, anything in the news, what's going on in Europe and homeland security, we have a very robust capability for mass casualty response, but we are doing a lot more training of our supervisors and our medics and deploying some new equipment out there to be even better. Of course, Rock the Squads, thank you. This was a, the largest community-based recognition event we've ever done for our volunteers, was done last month. Now, we're looking at how do we take this into some version into future years to continue with this program. The thing I'm the most excited about these days is the new building. If you remember, a few months ago, we came to you and said we'd like to buy the former Adult Learning Center on Virginia Boulevard. You approved that, and some conversion is underway for that facility. And what that's going to allow is, my staff is going to come out of rented space over by Linneham Mall, and also the training staff, which is over at Bird Neck, the Fire and EMS Training Center. We're going to be under one roof, be the first time since operating out of a trailer by Virginia General Hospital in the 70s. This is going to provide one-stop shopping for our volunteers and a lot, lot more capacity. I can't, won't expect you to read all the different rooms, but what we're getting out of this is two very large classrooms, small classrooms and conference rooms, and seven what we call skill rooms, which we practice our splending and bandaging. And one skill room is going to have a custom-made ambulance simulator. I mean, everything from the seats in an ambulance to you have to lift the stretcher to go into it. So, we'll be able to train out of the weather on a real ambulance, essentially. So, the other thing that's not shown there is upstairs in the building, we've plotted out a large classroom for emergency communications training. So, all future dispatch training will take place at our building. And then, in time, as we upgrade the equipment, harden the facility, our goal is to make that an emergency dispatch center if Building 30 across the street, we can't operate from there. So, we'll have some redundancy from a public safety standpoint. That building, look to see us in there this fall. I like to say my lease runs out October 15th, so I'm pretty certain that by October 15th, I'll either be in a moving van or in the new building. Moving forward, though, we've got great success with our numbers. We do a lot of recruiting, a lot of retention. All of my staff, all of our volunteers are recruiters and retainers. We've got the Virginia Rescue Squad Foundation brings hundreds of thousands of dollars and a full-time recruiter to the table. They're doing the heavy lifting right now on the recruiting. But it's time to formalize our strategies and get some people to the table and bring some of our efforts together to, under one umbrella, to be more strategic. And we've got to continue to work on our infrastructure. What we've done over the past year, we've got, you know, volunteers are, there's a life cycle to it. This last year, we really focused on that interest piece, getting them on board faster, getting them trained faster. And with the new building, that's going to address that. So, it's the next part is looking at the incumbent volunteer, how to keep them. And with that, with retention, though, retention's a lot of things to a lot of people. We've done surveys and studies and focus groups and coffee across the table, and there's a lot of things motivate people to join, a lot of things motivate people to stay. And so, we're addressing those things. I mean, there is some reality, there will be some turnover. When you, we recruit young folks to give them career training, that's the hook. Well, then, they get their career. And then, it's, the hook is to try to keep them to keep volunteering, maybe on a lesser status, number of hours while they still work their career and their job. But we're attacking retention heavily. Just kind of other things we're doing, we can't do this in a vacuum. You know, EMS, we've got to have strong relationships with the hospitals, with our rescue squads, the rescue council, the foundation. And we're, we're out there, we're pounding the pavement, building those relationships. I think I've drank more firehouse coffee than I have in the past year than I have in the past 20 years. Been, been to 20 different crews in the past year and counting, plus then all the rescue squads and what have you. So, we're building those relationships to go forward. Just operationally, day-to-day, we, you gave us some positions in the budget. Thank you again. We've offered one instructor position, and we're getting ready to fill the other one. We've opened up for the medics. This fall, we'll be hiring six new medics in the budget, which will be deployed in a nine-to-nine peak demand shift. Other thing going on is the CAD project, Computer Aid Dispatch. While that's primarily an IT and emergency communications project, I've had the dedicated chief officer down a chief officer down there to provision our component of it. This will be huge in terms of day-to-day operations for the alerting of our folks, closest unit, changing some of the call signs. I mean, this is, this is a big, it'll be transparent to the patient, hopefully transparent to everyone else, but, but a big thing for our crew. We've started the design phase, work with Public Works and Fire Department on the Burton Station, also a couple of years out for that. Next on the horizon, Pulse Point. I know a couple of folks here are very interested in that. Pulse Point's an app that you subscribe if there's a cardiac arrest and you're nearby and you want to go give CPR, it's going to, going to alert you on your phone. We have funding set up for that. We're going to look, probably the CAD, go online first, then put this online, because there's some components that hang on the CAD, and no sense putting it on the new, the old CAD and then have to take it back off. And that same chief officer working the CAD, we're doing some research because there's some capability in there we think we can, can use that other communities maybe haven't. And lastly, on the horizon is what they call mobile integrated healthcare, community paramedicine. This is something that's, that's happening in the EMS industry around the country that, you know, can we do more than just run out there with the ambulance? And it's more of a healthcare-based, and it runs the gamut from just basic education to systems that when a person is discharged from the hospital with a heart condition the next day, a paramedic's knocking on their door and coming in and reassessing them, making sure they've got all their meds, and doing some screening so that they don't get sent back into the hospital. That's, that level is very complex, a lot of training and partnerships with the hospitals. But I've got a team, EMS has got the lead on this, and I've got a team that's, that's working on that, and we're going to be providing some policy recommendations to, to the DCM City Manager to, how far do we want to take this and, and bringing this forward in future budget years? So really, going forward, my challenges, really, it's sustainability. We've got to recruit and retain members. Our organization, like any organization, is kind of like a bathtub, and, and there's holes, and, and we, we lose members. The trick is to minimize the leak as much as possible and also continue to put water into the tub to fill up for the people that are leaving. What's more challenging for EMS is that the call volumes are continuing to increase. So not only do we have to put members into the bathtub to make up for what we're losing, we have to continue to grow and add more, increase the flow in the inside. And with that, then we have to make sure that we have the infrastructure to it. And that's, I'm always going to give you a, a complete assessment on, it's not just 50 volunteers, it's then the, the back-of-house things to make sure that those 50 volunteers get uniforms, get trained, get scheduled, and that we have the resources to make sure that they're there. We, we've seen that in past, where we've had influx of folks and we didn't have the trained capacity, they lost interest, they left. And we're not going to let that happen again. So infrastructure and that. So just to close, we've achieved some great things over, over the years. I'm, I'm proud to be part of this, this department. It's not just the last year, but, but over the life of the department, done great things. And the reason we've done great things, people ask me, how, how can you have volunteers? How can you do it? Well, the reason is the community. The community's out there, they're donating, they're volunteering. We have the government investment in equipment and in, in the volunteer system. And you've given us the platform and the foundation to continue to succeed. So I'm confident there are many more great things ahead. And with that, you can certainly pull out your wallets if you'd like, but I am not here to ask for money. Do you have any questions?
Thanks. Well, Ed, a couple, a couple of things. So you talk about retention, which is important, and of course, recruitment is, is very important. And your numbers are trending up. Can you talk a little bit about some of the changes that you've made that, that have helped with recruitment and classes and things like that?
One of the things we did is we, we were more welcoming. Before, you'd call, if you needed to join, oh yeah, come back in three weeks and come to a cattle call orientation. You're in a room with 40 people, and you get the same tired speech, and it just wasn't welcoming. So now you call or send us, you go on the website, and we'll arrange within, within a couple of days, and you do a one-on-one briefing by, by staff member. We've got every support staff member in my office doing it, not just one. Everybody's involved in it. So it's more welcoming. We're getting the paperwork packets faster, and then classes are starting more often. Instead of one every quarter, now it's one every other month, and we're hoping to expand that to stick a couple more classes in there once we get in the new building.
And you also mentioned something about delivering bad news to people who weren't qualified in a little different way.
We, we do. And, and some of this is, we, we've really built up a website because people are more into looking at those things and more getting in saying what the disqualifiers are in front. The other thing we do, many of the candidates we reject is because of driving records. Well, we, we used to invest a lot of time and effort in that. So now you apply, before we call you to come do that screening, we run a driving check, and if you're not qualified, we're going to just call you and say, no, you're, you're not eligible. And that's really saved us from a large percentage of applicants that we'd been spending time with.
Thanks.
Hey, Bob?
Yeah, if I could just tell, you know, a little story that I think is appropriate now. As you know, I do home care rehab on people. And a couple of months ago, I had the privilege of working on a gentleman, and a youngish guy with a big family. He had a heart attack and was in a very, very critical state. And EMS came and they hung him with him a long time and eventually got him revived. Eventually, you know, very good recovery, but it took a while. And when the wife found out that I had my little part-time city job here, and she went to her wallet and pulled out the names of all the EMS and fire people that saved her husband.
Wow.
And the touching part of this story is the son is waiting to get old enough so he can join the EMS.
That's great.
And I don't think you, that people realize that you do this routinely, how many people you go out and save. I think, you know, you're, 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 how many families that you affect in a positive way by doing what you do. And I, and I mean that sincerely.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, I think the community realizes this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? John?
One thing, Mr. Vice Mayor, I did just pass this out. I mentioned last week that I was going to be coming up with resolution in opposition to offshore drilling, which I've passed around. I'll actually have it sent to everybody electronically tomorrow as well. If you have any comments before, if you can get those to me. I'm also looking for people to co-patron. I know you indicated, Mr. Vice Mayor, as well as others, that you wanted to be on there as well. So look for that in your email tomorrow, and please let me know if you've got any comments or changes.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, you got anything else?
No, I appreciate everybody being here today. Thank you.
Meetings adjourned.